The zoom is muted.
I can hear myself, so. Muted on the.
Let's see.
There we go.
Service.
We're, we're up and running. So any other comment? Alright, so moving on to, to approve the agenda, uh, one of the things that we have here that I'd like consensus for, we can do a vote if. We want to vote on it is our executive sessions, those three items, uh, Chris and I talked, we don't anticipate me coming back out of executive session for a particular. Um, decision. So in interest of the public's time, we need to move that executive session. Because they just come out of executive session and go, we're closing our regular session. So if you guys want to stay around. Then you're more than welcome to, but uh, there won't be any decisions made out of executive session. So by consensus, are we good moving all of J down to ask him?
And.
Yes. Alright.
I would also, Tess and I were talking about our reports and mine actually complements or first actually complements mine in reverse order. So. Flip flopping my report to G and principals report to H.
Yeah. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, take a, um, motion to approve the agenda with those changes. Or we can do it by consensus. I'll just do consensus. Uh, everybody good with the consensus for approved agenda?
Yes.
If that's by unanimous consent. And then for the consent agenda, uh, the minutes, any changes, thoughts? Minutes? I didn't see any. Okay. So, uh, asking for unanimous consent, or is that the move on? Yep. Okay. Um, and now we're in the CFO's financial report. Joe C four is yours.
Um, this is all. Hello. Uh, I passed out my report for you guys. Um, just the what we're doing. Um, finalizing submitting information to the auditors. They will be onsite December third. Uh, and then otherwise just kind of business as usual. Um, some highlights, we are continuing to meet weekly with our grants team. Uh, we are currently gathering information for, uh, submitting a childcare infrastructure grant. To build an early learning center that could also serve as a community center during non-school hours. Um, with the hope that we can do some, all kinds of fun, some parenting classes and some cooking stuff and all kinds of stuff off hours. And open up some room in our elementary end. Uh, we met with Kalen Lane who works for the Ford Family Foundation last week. To discuss partnering with them and she is also super tight into the charitable giving community and introduced us to. Several different contacts with different foundations. Um, so we can work on partnering with them. We submitted a classroom makeover grant through South Coast Community Credit Union. With the hope that we can purchase some commercially related playground equipment for the preschool playground. And we are working on planning, um, what we would like to submit for our farm to CMP sustainability grant application. Uh, that's due in, I think mid-November, um, with the idea of enhancing student engagement and really increasing our front to table production by students. So. Uh, trying to incorporate more things at our egg property. On the back page, um, I also provided a cost per student analysis of the school currently. Um, you'll see that instruction is coming, well, this works on. Uh, the three hundred and sixty-one K twelve students and three hundred or thirty-four preschool students for a total of three hundred and ninety-four students in the building. Uh, we are currently budgeting spending eleven thousand two hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents per student in instruction. You can see the breakdowns for support, um, community services for a total cost per student of twenty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Um, our total formula revenue, which is state school fund dollars plus our local tax revenue. Provides twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars per student. As you can see, that's a nine thousand ninety-eight dollar shortfall per student. Which is offset through both our state and federal non-competitive grants. Um, and then our competitive grants that we chase every weekend, uh, or apply for. So, um, al- almost half. Of our budget comes from that stuff. Um. Then you'll just see my financials on the other side as usual. Um, it is the season in October. We're on kind of the tail end of the spend down. Until our local taxes come in in November. So we get the bulk of those taxes in November and had to store some cash in the bank. Um, dental fund on the front, special revenue funds on the back, or on the second page. Nothing really out of the ordinary to fry your eyes to here. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? So we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. So Asset has been working since late August on vermin fire system installation. So they have completed installation across all of our school buildings. The system's active. We currently have bells set to silent. The company's monitoring for any necessary adjustments or connectivity issues. So bells are going to be fully activated on October thirteenth, which is a non-school day as part of the final systems test. Um, a special thank you goes out to our construction students and Ms. Eglin for picking rocks on our playground following the conclusion of our sprinkler line installation. So now that our weather's starting to cool, we're going to proceed with seeding the back playground and reestablish our grass growth. And then, um, we just continue all of our efforts to make sure we have a well-kept student center on campus. As we transition into fall, we are down to our time custodians that we had last year. Um. And it just becomes apparent that I need to focus some effort on doing an audit of our custodial staffing and assignments. And what tasks they're doing on a daily, weekly, monthly, yearly basis, just for efficiency in that program. On September twenty-sixth, our certified staff participated in a K twelve language arts and math standards prioritization session with educational excellence. And so the end of that day resulted in a grade by grade map identifying which standards teachers should prioritize throughout. A dufer students educational experience from K through twelfth grade in those two core subjects by grade. Um, and that just supports vertical alignment, makes sure that our instructional coherence across all grade levels and content areas matches up. September was really busy for students, staff and community. So we did our eight man classic, the classic volleyball tournament. Proceeds benefit all of our athletic programs, including winter and spring sports. Our Jerry Walker and Dupree's Endowment Fund dinner and auction took place on September twentieth at the Duffer City Park. Special thanks to coordinators and volunteers, Elliot, Bill Tominsky, Jim and Gary Hagie, Gina and Jeff Coakenour, Carrie Cobb. And staff volunteers, Sarah Fane, Tess Wells, Jody Weaver and Cara Odell for their leadership. And special appreciation to our student volunteers who I had more than ten students fall or come up the next Sunday. Where it was pouring down rain to help with cleanup and even finish within two hours. So I was really happy with that. I did a month, first monthly pulse check for staff, students and parents to gather feedback, engage school climates, climate. I'm going to try to share that with you right now. I only have the staff results. Oops. Um. We're not, we're kind. The future is.
Good.
Okay. So here are the result of our September staff pulse checks. And these are, um, seven quick questions that staff are invited to answer every month, starting with our first full monthly school. So. I collected answers by department. So we had, um, almost forty-three percent of the staff answers were from staff who. Work with pre-K through fifth, thirty-four percent were six through twelfth grade staff and then almost twenty-three percent were support staff. First question is, I feel supported by school district leadership. So we are at, and a one is. Negative, two is neutral, three is positive, or rather disagree, neutral, agree. So we have seven that just. Twenty percent disagree, twenty-five point seven are neutral and fifty-four point three are positive or agree. Communication from the district is clear and timely. Eight percent disagree, almost forty-six are neutral and forty-five are agreement. I have resources and tools to do my job effectively. Almost twenty-three disagree, twenty-three percent disagree. Forty percent are neutral and thirty-seven percent agree. The school culture this year has been positive and collaborative. Um, twenty-eight point six disagree, forty-five point seven are neutral and twenty-five point seven agree. I feel recognized and valued for the work I do. Thirty-four point three percent disagree, twenty-eight point six percent agree. Thirty-seven point one percent agree. And then final question was how manageable has your workload been this month? So we have fifty-one percent of staff saying that they feel somewhat overwhelmed. Twenty-five point seven percent say it's just flat out overwhelming. Um, seventeen point one are saying that their workload is manageable this month and then a small chunk. Say that their workload feels very manageable. So that's it. Quick and easy. And what I'll do is report these out to you guys every month for my superintendent's report. So that we can see are we staying the same or are our changes affecting more growth towards positive answers? Or is our work environment and, uh, practices and policies leaning towards more negative responses?
How much of that can you break down by like roles? Like, but elementary versus high school again in the survey?
In this survey, I can just break it down by who answered. I'm trying to protect autonomy. So that's a good question.
Yeah, but if it was just broken down by the elementary, those sort of like the little supports out, just something to see.
Okay, like kind of three micro surveys.
Yeah, so like the three categories you showed at the beginning. If we saw sort of a pie chart for each category, that'd just be. Like show.
Yeah.
And where the needs are.
Thank you. Okay, I've also started monthly staff listening sessions and then finally was able to meet with my building leadership team, which is has, um. Equal representation across eight twelve or eight five, six, twelve support staff. Um, so that they can also help alleviate some of these staff stressors by building some end of year goals and some micro goals that they're going to work on to. Get to achieve their bigger goals. Um. A lot going on on the state and federal level. So multiple fiscal and policy developments are underway for several reasons. Um, the main ones being the current federal government shutdown in HR one. So currently Governor Kotex called for a spending slowdown and then the legislative slate of fiscal offices. Uh, put down a reductions request. So what that means is although the federal government is that now O E is drawing from reserves that. Cover approximately four and a half to seven weeks of operations. So there are currently no disruptions to do first federally funded reimbursements at this time. However, um, some of our federal grant, the impact aid, which is not controlled by O E, those payments have been delayed due to the federal shutdown. So we've seen no new impact aid money for the twenty-five fiscal year. Um, and then some of us on the grants team have applied for O E specific competitive grants. And those are probably not going to be announced for quite some time since O E is using their reserves right now. And then HR one monitoring. HR one, um, affects, really affects our child nutrition programs and also student eligibility for free and reduced price meals. So currently Duffer is one hundred percent free and reduced price meals. Uh, and also Oregon uses Medicaid data for this eligibility process. Um, so sustained Medicaid reductions that would be related to HR one would lower E-rate program discounts. And then reduce resources tied to early intervention and early childhood special education programs. Um, over time, this could lead to increased special education needs and the later reduced services to children who don't. Qualify for Medicaid anymore. So particularly effective with babies with feeless resources. So at this, the governor's level, she has asked for all state agencies to reduce costs, um, to protect poor services. Because there is a three hundred and seventy-two point seven million dollar shortfall. Our legislative fiscal office in September twenty twenty-five forecast projects a revenue shortfall. Which would require state agencies, including O E to have to submit three budget reduction options by November third. So for Duffer School, it's a planning, um, and not an implementation stage yet. So O E is committed to protecting poor services for students, families, districts. So we just have to make sure. Um, to monitor updates and then closely plan fully intention and then accordingly. Looking forward, October thirteenth is annual title one parent meeting with Ms. Feeson. October twenty-fifth is the district volleyball tournament in the Dallas. October thirtieth is the end of our first quarter. So halfway through the semester for our six through twelve students. November fourth and sixth are evening parent teacher conferences. And then November tenth is our Veterans Day assembly. And that is what I've got.
Any, any observations, questions for the superintendent? Okay, moving on to the principal's report.
Okay. Um, I'm going to go through the elementary wing first. Britt, our title one bringer, she's completed all of devil's testing K five. And they are running their small groups right now. She also had a river to schedule this year to reach some of our middle school students. So she has a small group that she's doing three days of lead with her sixth graders to continue that support. Um, our third grade teacher is piloting a new math program called Amplify. Uh, we are still looking at math programs that we might be interested in. Maybe is that coming near or depending on funds. Um, but she's good, she's probably having amplified. And then each grade K five took a field trip to Skye's pumpkin patch and they did that already. And then middle school and high school, last week, uh, we hosted a FASFA night, the seniors, that was organized by Leona and Sarah. It went really great. Uh, we had thirty-five students who took the ASVAB test and Rosa Ortiz from the army, she's going to be here this next week and she's going to review the results with them. Deanna, one of our new math teachers, she's also piloting a new math, um, program, algebra one on this one. It is at Amplify. Amplify goes, um, from kindergarten all the way up to geometry. So if we were to choose that path. It is streamlined all the way up to geometry. And the next homecoming was a success. A huge thanks to Nancy. She runs ASB and ASB students. All the students who helped to make it a great week. It was really fun and all the staff had great buy-in. Um, Chris and I were touched based on our alignment for the math and ELA standards. Uh, my next one is some staff feedback, which I know that some of you guys have been hearing it. Uh, one theme that we're all hearing from staff is that our, their current prep time doesn't allow enough opportunity to really differentiate lessons, prepare materials or collaborate around data. And instructional practices, um, due to the needs of our students and high needs of students that come in. We used to come to school in our gap as this large and I'm sure that you guys know our gap is huge now. Um. Teachers want to do their best for every student, but they're finding it really difficult to fit all that into the time that they have right now. So I think it's worth a discussion on how we might better support the planning and collaboration time. And that kind of brings me to this letter that you guys all have to start this conversation event, um, potentially with you. Um, dear board members, over the past several weeks, we received valuable feedback from staff indicating that our current schedule does not allow out of the time. For lesson preparation, differentiation and collaboration around data and instructional practices to support this instructional quality and teachers effectiveness. We would like you to explore possible adjustments that provide more dedicated time for this important work. Um, two potential solutions that they have come up with was. We used to have an early release Wednesday. Uh, we took that away. We were, one of the talks was returning to an early release model on our Friday. So we taught the kids until noon and then that second half would be collaboration time and prep time. The other option, potential option could be moving to a four-day student week, but a five-day staff work week to allow for professional collaboration planning. Um, the request potentially is that maybe the board would consider pilot team one of these models after quarter one, which is October thirty-first. Uh, the pilot period would allow us to gather data, instructional impact, staff collaboration, student outcomes before making any long-term decisions. Um, we thank you for your consideration and your support as we balance this time with our teachers. There's a couple of schedules to look at. The first one is our schedule that we already have. It's what we're going to go off this going of school year. The second schedule with the red on it would be the potential early release schedule. See what that would look like. And then the last schedule would be if the Fridays was, was a teacher worked in.
So is any of this factored into like the C time required?
Yeah, it would be. So I could, I could break it down into minutes. I just got back from my conference event. So I'm really sorry. Do not have that.
Yeah, so I just, that's always.
Yeah, and obviously they have to meet our C time no matter what. So that would be factors in one hundred, one hundred percent.
And then is there like? And then is there, like, I assume you had some input from staff on this?
Yeah.
Is there a staff preference?
Um.
I feel like probably more time.
Obviously, they would love more, but that's why kind of the two options are there. Because we know that we've for the past three years, we've kind of brought up this situation, uh what's going on in the school and kind of back and forth on it. But I think the conversation really may need to be opened up. And I know that a few staff member, a few board members have come into classrooms and checked out what's happening in there. And I know that we've done some conversations too, so. I think they're just. As the planet had told, like, you have seventy-five percent who are overwhelmed in their classrooms. And our class sizes aren't getting any smaller, we're not closing that gap right now, and we have offensive needs. And we need to reach, we need to keep reach our lows, but we also need to reach our highs, it's all the.
And then sort of the impact on non-constructual or non-certified staff.
Yeah, so that was one of the the thoughts on the going to the early release model. And Kristen and I were chatting about this and I think maybe Josie was on it too. On Fridays, all members would still be here, the bus was supposed to run two routes. And then the E A's, because we have a lack of custodial staff right now, that they have it, they would have a choice that they would like to participate in um extracurricular duties, whatever that may look like, or um continuing to do some prep in the classrooms or help with teachers, so.
So so moving this forward, um since it's not on the agenda tonight, we've got other stuff to go through. I would suggest making a request for a special meeting this week or special uh special board meeting as soon as we could get it together. Because if you're requesting for October thirty-first, we won't have a meeting till after that November. So throw a throw an email my way and then I'll try to coordinate something.
Okay, and what I heard you say is you would like to see the C hours?
Well, yeah, just a comparison between what we have now, what each of those two calendars would mean in terms of our compliance. And then uh you know, stuff about how much P E time, like serves the factors of all the little things that.
Would come into place.
Would come into play when you mess with the schedule that much, because then, you know, are you getting any P E hours for the uh you know, Fridays? And and also, like you said, the impact on all staff uh and the budget. And then Josie loves to play with the budget.
Anybody else have something they would need to add in?
Well, that was our biggest conversation when we talked about this before the end of last school year is that we weren't in any position to make a decision like this with all the changes that were happening because we really needed to look at what the numbers were gonna look like, how that was gonna affect the budget and and everything, so. Um I understand why it's coming back up, but I'm a little surprised it's coming back up so soon because we thought that it was way too early in this new process to try and plop something like this. Because it's a, it's a big, it's not a little thing, it's a big thing and it changes a lot. And once we implement it, it's gonna be really hard to go back and just tell parents, oh, never mind, changed our mind. You know, we really, I think, we haven't, it's like, yeah, I really want to be clear that if we're going to do a test implementation, that we're really leaning that direction and we're not gonna flip out.
But I think that um last year, that was absolutely further conversation. I think the teachers are so in full force though, Rick, coming and talking and.
But we just, yeah, and we did say we really needed input from other stakeholders, not just the teachers. So that was stakeholders as in parents and, you know, other staff and how this might affect.
So so that would be a a request to myself or a special meeting and or a listening session or something to where we can get enough information to implement something on October thirty-first. So if you have very strong voices, I would say get them together with their data and request a special meeting. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the impact on parents even, especially with that short turnaround time. If if all of a sudden they have to have childcare for all the Fridays. I mean, granted, there aren't that many Friday, I mean, November and December, there aren't that many Fridays in school anyway, but yeah. Yeah, and the parents did them.
Yeah, but we dedicate time to flush flush that out, so make a request, we'll we'll get on it. Um the any anything else from your side of things? Any any clarifying questions outside of this item? Okay, so move on to athletic director, all athletics report.
Yeah, all right. Uh first of all, um for those of you uh who are wanting to listen for our flagship station on Y one oh two during our home football games, uh I'm doing a Ranger recap every Monday um with Shannon Milgret at Y one oh two that uh gives highlights and updates on what we're doing athletically at Duffer. Um so we're talking about Duffer Athletics and all the things that are going on, and then they play it during halftime of games. Uh September was Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. Um lots of signage and banners around our school. Um our volleyball team also during um the event had shirts sponsoring the topic along with wristbands, ribbons, and the banners that I mentioned. Uh the school that was uh participating with us, Trout Lake, also had their coaches, uh dawn ribbons and bracelets as well. Um I I gave a speech uh before the game about uh mental health and the uh support that the community is offering. And what we do as a school, I thought it was really a nice, did a nice piece to uh have people hear about. Uh senior banners are up for fall sports. If you haven't seen them, they're pretty cool. Um senior night for volleyball will be Tuesday night, October fourteenth against Lyle. Um Thursday night, October sixteenth will be senior night for football and cheer. Uh we'll also be incorporating a special blend blend or weave to senior night now. And that is for our seniors, we are soliciting them to pick one staff member at Duffer um to be acknowledged along with their parents that have been influential or inspirational during their time at Duffer. Currently, we've got two openings on our coaching staff at the varsity level that need to be filled. An assistant boys' basketball coach and a head boys and girls golf coach. Uh something that um I think is a big win, Krista mentioned our grants team. Um we had a big win earlier this year or or last spring that we're seeing now come to fruition with ten thousand dollars that is coming towards uh new equipment for our weight room. I think that's a great thing for our student athletes, and I'm super excited about what that'll um offer them from a competitive uh standpoint as well. Kristen also mentioned the Eight Man Classic, that was a huge hit again this year. Uh just uh a lot of great feedback from uh the coaches and people who participated in that. For those of you that were aware, Mother Nature threw about everything at us that night, and we didn't finish until after eleven o'clock. Um and everybody really was um helping just put put that on, it was an amazing experience. Uh going to sport specific stuff, do for football, do for uh doing what they do best in football, and that's win. Uh they're currently ranked number one in the state. Uh they've got three regular season games left. And my guess is is that while the first round bye, that wouldn't have us playing a home playoff game until weekend of November fourteenth and fifteenth. For those of you wanting to look at your calendars. Um we currently have defeated four teams that are ranked in the top ten. And Gavin Anderson um last week was selected the Columbia Board's News Athlete of the Week. Uh moving on to volleyball, they're currently in probably the biggest game that we've had in over a decade at this school at Iowa right now. They're in the top ten and they have an eleven-match winning streak going. They've lost the least amount of sets in the entire one A classification this year. They've only lost five five sets before the meeting started. Um we have um the Big Sky District Tournament that Kristen also mentioned will be October twenty uh twenty-fifth. And the sub tournament will take place October twenty-seventh through November first. I strongly anticipate we'll have multiple home playoff games. The O S A A has moved the district or the state um volleyball tournament from Ridgeview High School now out to La Grande High School. Um and I think uh that'll happen November seventh and eighth, so a new site for volleyball. And our um themed nights for volleyball, Tuesday, October fourteenth, will be the Red Out Game. And then Wednesday, October fifteenth, will be our Pink Out Game for our last home game against Ray Mitchell Wheeler. Moving to cross country, we've got a couple of people I wanted to highlight on our co-op with the Dallas. Uh Zed Stelzer and Ally Mesa. I went over there a couple of weeks ago to watch them both run in the Bridget Nelson Invitational. They're having phenomenal years. Both cross-country teams are in the top ten. And one of the things I wanted to mention about Ally Mesa is perhaps this Friday, she will break a twenty-six-year-old record that stood at due for since nineteen ninety-nine for the girls' five thousand meters. She's just a few seconds away from breaking that. I think that's a phenomenal thing to highlight. Finishing with our cheer group, um they just finished up and wrapped up the junior cheer um uh junior cheer camp that they had and did a phenomenal job of homecoming festivities and the alumni event this past weekend. They've been out recently in just the last five weeks to the Pig Bowl, to the Jerry Walker, DeFries event. Again, alumni and homecoming weekend, and they're just everywhere when the school needs something. And I think they're an amazing addition to what we do athletically. Um last but not least, I wanted to say that we've got new uniforms also for our cheerleaders along with our volleyball team. They look phenomenal. And I wanted to thank you guys, and I want to close with a statement that um invite your friends, family, and people that you know to come to Ranger Athletic Events. I'd like to take also a moment to thank the board for your time, involvement, and support with respect to Duffer Athletics. It's not lost on me and our middle school athletic director how appreciative we are for the administration, our coaching staff, and the partners that we work with and their commitment to Duffer. Thank you, guys. I appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Anybody any questions for athletic director? I have one, is there any chatter about men's co-op volleyball or boys' because it just passed a couple of days ago?
It passed, yep. Uh volleyball just passes as a uh a sport. I have heard nothing about that. I do not know if the Dallas will have anything or River will have anything. Those would be two people I'd reach out to immediately, um but I don't know, it just it just happened two days ago.
Yeah.
Yep, as I said.
Said the 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 puff, the volleyball, I don't know, what do they call it?
Tough puff.
Tough puff, yeah. There's some good, we have some good volleyball out there, so.
Got season being the spring, yeah.
Probably, yeah.
So, okey-dokey. Uh thanks, John. Uh moving on to the old business, we're into policy things now. These are the electronic devices, I'll hand it over to Kristen to let you know about the updates.
Okay, I've grabbed grabbed this one over dead for you guys. This is the last time, knock on wood. So this is our personal electronic policy review, third reading. And the only reason I'm doing a third reading is because O S B A, we're just ahead of O S B A because you guys adopted your um, sorry, hold on. You guys adopted your um policy back in April of twenty-five. So um but O S B A is catching up to speed and they did release a sample policy. So I put that in your board packet to take a look at. It's the same coding as our ours is, which is J F C E V. And then they also did a J F C E V A R, which is a form for a request for a personal electronic devices exception. And then that last attachment is our current policy that the red reflects.
So the first one is the recommended policy.
The first one of the recommended, the A R is a um optional form that you could use for requests for personal electronic devices exceptions.
And then this one is our.
And then this one, it's all marked up just to show you the historical changes we've been making um after the governor's executive order is offered. So is your, I did a cross-analysis of our policy and the O S B A sample policy, and I see nothing missing. I was just like, is their compliance compatible with their typical policy? Just, I'm really, um as far as A R, the A R form, like maybe Tess, you could speak to this a little better than I can. Have you, have there been any requests for exemption of personal electronic devices?
No, it not even with any of our individual planned students or.
I think there was like one, maybe I have one request from a high school student who wanted to use it for like a.
For a timer, but then we did a watch instead, yeah.
So I think most of our, like, our population that has personal electronics or sixth through twelfth grade. From, I mean, we have more students this year, but we're still outweighed three hundred and sixty-three if we include elementary. I personally don't think we need an A R form at this time. I think it's been fine via email, phone call.
In terms of.
In terms of people wanting to get an exception.
Yeah, I mean, this is more of a thing, I guess.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that, but it's just one more thing, yeah.
So you want us to.
Any speak now or forever?
Yeah, this this policy here.
We've got more policy as.
Yeah, okay.
As it is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's worth considering.
So we don't have to do, if it's already as.
I'm just not gonna include it in November if there's no further discussion.
No amendments or anything?
Yeah.
Okay, then uh. Yeah.
Put it into that in the policy book.
All right, now uh to board goals, we have the board goal discussion, executive summary for from Kristen. So I'll hand it over to her, what you'd like to see us discuss.
Okay, so just a reminder, we started this conversation last month um talking about district leadership, establishing three primary goals, goal areas for this year, which are campus safety, academic improvement, and then English language arts and academic improvement in E L A and math, and then positive staff culture development. Um establishment of eventual clear board goals would provide some strategic direction for administrative efforts and make sure that we can come up with measurable outlook outcomes and make our mini-goals, make sure they all align. Um. So, let's see. For campus safety infrastructure, um we've identified opportunities for enhanced security measures, updated emergency response protocols, so that's mainly looking for funding for additional camera placement around our main entries to the building, and then also the update to our fire system. Academic performance trends as a district, we have um for E L A and math, we've identified that we have lower performance on state tests in the areas of E L A and math compared to or compared to our pre-COVID level of performance. So that's why we are doing a standards alignment, so we make sure that all of our standards are prioritized um at a level that makes sense as some students move through the grades. And then survey data at the end of last year highlighted how important it was to maintain positive workplace culture and ensure our staff retention and also ensure that we're attracting quality candidates in our competitive rural education employment market or, yeah, employment market. And then just building off of your guys' August and September discussions, what you guys discussed was really like laying aside some time as a longer work session to talk about goals and board visioning.
Good, so that that was discussion, just we need to find some time to do that. And if we're going to try to, if we're gonna have a request for a special meeting, we might need to squeeze those in together.
Um. Well, the next item on the agenda has the thing.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, and that's what I, that's what I was gonna go and say, okay, we got this discussion about those be a training part two or goals. If we're gonna have that with Vince, then we don't need to couch that with a request for this proposal unless you wanna meet for eight hours on Saturday, so. Um I love meetings, so you shouldn't get me into a meeting anytime. But um we do need to prioritize our board goals because we're operating this year without board goals by, and we adopted the superintendent's goals. Um so we need to mesh our representative priorities with the school priorities. So we can try to get that done via email, done any deliberation to pick a date for goals. We want Vince, who can touch in this next agenda item, who wants Vince to come be with us to help us move through board goals. So those two things, we want to discuss it quite a bit tonight, how we want to get to our board goals or we just want to try to do a special work session in the month of October.
Number one, are you planning on having Vince come down or are we doing that via Zoom?
For budgetary reasons, we'll do it via Zoom.
Exactly. Um my personal thought is that we have some really big work stuff that really needs to. Work stuff that really needs to happen very quickly. Um, and I would really like to concentrate on that a little bit more than taking a lot of time on a, on a Vince meeting. I know we need to do that, but I think we have some, some issues that we really need to sit down and take the time to work through. Other than worry about board training right now, go back to that, but that's just my.
Yeah, my, my instinct would be push this up to Vince to that November, December.
Something like that.
And then prioritize that and.
My biggest concern is, um, the budget that we have currently was not made with the goals. With the new superintendent's goals and what our goals are gonna end up being. So, um, I'm really concerned that we get those goals really finalized for both of us and all in alignment. And then really take a look back at the current budget we're using and make sure that those budget numbers are aligned with what our goals actually are. Yes, those really need to align very quickly.
Yeah, then our, in our policy, we have board goals for big like academics, things like that. We're also supposed to be more fiscal responsibility plan that's separate from that, so assume. When, when is the audit done?
Uh, in December.
Yeah, so that's in December, so I, from my opinion, I think January, February is when it comes to what are we, what are we looking for? Next year, but we need with this and the, um. Planning that we do now, we really need to get the budget in front of us and go, what's, what's your priority? Especially for public comments tonight that we had is.
Yes, how is our spending aligned with what our goals are and how they've changed? Because those have definitely changed with each semester.
Also, I mean, we start budget work in. January, yeah, so for next year.
Yeah, exactly. So we, I, I'm just really concerned that maybe there's some, some things not in alignment that we need to be, you know, looking at.
Okay, so try and get a work session for October for two things. Board goals, alignment with our fiscal responsibility, and then also the. Proposal from pilot collaboration prep time, which we need some data as a view for how that affects budgetary.
How much time do you think we should get that set together?
I can have it.
All right.
So looking at one week at least.
Good. So I guess this to the, every board goals. And next, next item is, um, our training. We want to have discussion about that again. All right, moving on, um, staff and operating principles, Kristen, Kate, what?
Okay, so in last month, we talked about board staff operating principles. There's a lot of policies that we have adopted that lay out how the board interacts with staff. And the stock, the purpose of this document is to make those policies a little more accessible and reader friendly. So, uh, there were a couple, there was some feedback from the board. Um, primarily attaching specific policies to the document. And then also making a district organizational chart, um, just kind of dictating our different departments. And how they are organized. So what I've got for you is the actual staff operating document. And at the end, I've added a section called policy connections. So each section now, uh, has the relative policies tied to it. And then the fourth page of the document is school district organizational chart. So just laying out where the board is and that the board supervises the superintendent. And then below that in green and orange are, are different administrators and are different departments. So just a, um, recommendation for discussion. I have some follow-up questions, so. Oops. By the actual memo, um, just reviewing the board staff operating principles. If you have any more input and ideas to make sure that this is a framework for effective governance. Uh, and that it's usual user friendly to anyone who's accessing it and trying to learn about how. How they relate to the board and vice versa.
When it comes to the organizational chart and your listening sessions with the staff and or trainings. Are they told how the process works? Where it's, hey, I got an issue, go to my direct supervisor, and then the idea of, well, I didn't really like the answer for that, so I'll go up again and up again. Are they?
That's a document that was created last year by a communication organization. I can send that to you guys via email.
Okay. Anything else on this, Kristen?
No.
Any questions?
Do you guys wanna third reading? Do you like it as is?
Do, since it's not a policy, do we?
It's not, I guess you.
We don't have, it's, it's your.
Yeah, you can pick it as is. I will add a little bit to our website.
And this will probably work like any manual.
And it's a working, so if there's a different, a new governance policy adopted, it just, it's editable and re-uploadable.
Yeah, anybody got any problems with any language or? Get the ditch in there. Um, so staff operating's done, uh, school board email address.
Yeah, this was the wild, wild west over the summer. So when Jack retired and I came on in the superintendent position. There was a big. Um, inconsistency when Mr. Little was trying to remove Jack from the forwarding, forwarding feature and adding me. So that make sure that if emails come in, I can either answer them or alert the board. Um, the account was asking for some sort of dual authentication from a phone number we've never even heard of. Um, so just premises, how complicated things can go, password resets. So we wanna make sure that our board email is functional so that people can email you guys feel heard. They feel like there's transparency, there's efficiency and timeliness in the responses. Um, and then just, so there's a school affiliate email address that you guys can set the boundaries. Between the board members and the collective board and responses, um, and expanding public ac- access to board outside of scheduled meetings. Um, so the forwarding function has been tested as of like the late last week. I think the majority have replied that you've got it, so got that cleaned up. Um, so that forwarding function does now make, make sure that all of those messages are forwarded to your guys, to you guys simultaneously. Doesn't always guarantee that there's response, it doesn't clarify responsibility for responding from a board level. Some districts utilize a designated board chair response system. Others direct public communication through the superintendent's office for documentation and follow-up. Um, either way, it goes, making sure those engagement opportunities and responses are consistent is the most important here. So I just had a couple of questions that I would recommend you guys discuss. So should the forwarding system remain as is? Or should a designated process for responses be established? And does the board wanna maintain a single shared address or would individual member emails be appropriate? And it's up to you and how you guys feel efficiency and transparency is gonna be the easiest. And the most sustainable.
I think it makes sense. I mean, as long as the forwarding is working and we all get it.
We don't know that. And there's really been some hard feelings because this has been ongoing now. You know, it's been glitch after glitch. And so I've heard people really think that we are really not paying attention. Because we're just not getting our, our messages. So we have to figure out something that's kind of, um. I don't know, more trustworthy. I, I think I'd rather have, have an individual email that I know I'm seeing. And then I'm, because it's just been ongoing and we find out after the fact that we've been addressed and we have never. You know, we haven't gotten back to people and that's just unacceptable.
I think that raises a third question for me, like if the board decides you wanna have individual emails, do you want your personals? Or would you like a school issued first name, dot, last name, at dufer dot K twelve dot O R dot U S?
I mean, I think in terms of. I, I don't love the idea of using my personal email for board business, just in terms of like separation of. Roles and that sort of thing. Um, but when, I mean, the issue with having individual emails is, is like. I get an email to my school board email. I don't know if everybody else got it too. So it creates that like, did you get this too? Like, cause, because if you're responding to that person and your response sounds same as mine, like, you know, the idea is usually that Tim is the board chair. Should be the one responding, um, at least acknowledging they received an email. And then, you know, we've sort of limited in, in sometimes what we could say. And so when it starts going out to individual people, we kind of lose some of that, uh. Compliance with making sure that everybody's sound same. I mean, I totally understand your concerns. It's, it's not okay to send out emails and never get responses.
Right.
Uh, did everybody get press email today? I know.
Yeah, yeah, I get.
I did not.
I mean, so some. So I would, I would prefer all of my contact information as a single representative be on the school website. So phone number's tricky because it gets scraped by bots and I don't want bots.
Yeah.
So at least my email, my individual ten four D S D two at gmail dot com is fine for me. And then, um, if it's appropriate, cause what I've run into is some people say I, I'd love to email you yourself. But I know that if I send it to the board, I get an auto response that just says, we'll get back to you. If I don't get the email, then people think that I said, oh, I'll get back to you on that question. And it's five, six, seven days later. It's like. Uh, he's a jerk. Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't even know, um. So I would prefer my con, my personal contact, at least it makes sense at least for the chair to have their personal contact information on there. And then each individual board member can decide that they want to do. But it gets, it's tricky because then. Um, I, I, I don't wanna give a, cause I did ask Bonnie and then I got to Kristen, was my place to ask Bonnie to. Do a directive from me for the school website, but we're also elected officials that are connected with the school. So it gets tricky like who's, how, how can we as individual representatives say give my information? Out there without the board having this discussion saying put their individual information on me, so.
Well, I, I think for ease for everybody too, if it was one place, a email went to, so. But, I mean, we're obviously having an issue with what's in place. What about having it sent to whoever's the chair?
Yeah, I was gonna throw out a worse question, like the, there's the, when the chair CCs everybody. Should there be, yeah, like, like an ongoing forever board dot chair at Dufer? That whoever the chair was has password, the password.
Yeah, that's fine by me. I've said it. Cause we do a Google system to where I can just sign in.
Yeah, so you would just add like a profile, okay?
And then when Tim responds, he CCs all of, all of us so that we know what's going on.
Yeah.
The issue with having a school board one is the assumption that it's accessible. By other people within the school system. And so there's still, uh, probably hesitation. I want this to go. And I'm, I, I would forward it to people depending on what the, the issue that it is. But the confidence that it's not going to all the board, it's not going, it's not being CCed directly. As soon as it hits the inbox to superintendent or test, because they might be saying something like, hey, we sent emails to the. Appropriate people below the board level. And then there's the chance of fixing it before. I don't know, that you know what I mean? Like the confidence, like I, I went through the process and I need one individual, whoever the board chair is at that time. I have confidence that they're seeing it themselves, not everybody else. So that's why it'd be easy just with whoever the board chair is, their personal email. But they don't want personal emails.
Well, do you run into public records issues?
Um, no.
Moving on.
For.
Like once you are not the board chair and any emails that were done in the business of the school should be public records.
Yeah, yeah, every email.
But I mean, if they're your, to your personal email, then that opens your personal email too.
Well, that's why I made a board.
Oh, yeah.
Very specific. I made a board. So does, as long as, as maybe something underneath the board chair, this email goes directly to the board chair. And it's not me saying like, I, I want, I just want the stuff. It's the confidence that comes from, if someone needs to do that, that it's not.
So I think what should happen regardless is just deleting the school dot board. Clearly not, because it's clearly. I'm gonna explain about now you give minutes between Bonnie and CS fixing that. We did a test email. I think all of you replied back, yeah, got it. We thought it was good. And then we had a staff number email, like you didn't get it. You didn't get it.
I think you should.
So it's, it's this morning.
Yeah, she sent it today.
But it's clearly not reliable. It's not a good look for the board, so deleting that. And then we need to have messaging on our board webpage due to technical difficulties.
Yeah, she sent it at seven thirty.
School dot board has been deleted. This email your, um. Email your questions or whatever to board dot chair at dufer dot K twelve dot O R. Less this is, this is a direct line of communication to the chair and for the redactions. Depending on elections, we can take that. This probably doesn't have to be that, like, we don't have to have that up forever, but people just need to have notification. Like, nope, we're not using that anymore. It's not reliable.
So what if they want the whole board to know though? Like as a collective group, now we don't have a.
There is that.
Well, we delete the school dot board. One, then we don't have a, that's it.
Well, I mean, I can create another Gmail that's, that's, you know, if we wanna.
Shift me.
Or if I, if I don't, I mean, if I don't use my personal email, just, you know, just to, for cleanliness. I could, I mean, I can create a Gmail that's like, and school board. You know, I mean, I can create one of those and, and give it to you and even put it on the website. I just say, so, for my personal, there was already stuff.
Yeah.
All right, so what?
Plenty of people have my personal email already and send me stuff, but.
So what's, what's the directive of the board? What do you wanna do?
I think something will all create or, or use, either use our personal emails or create a board, a board email. And then you'll have your chair email. And so if somebody wants to email all board members, all they'll all be listed there on the website.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of one single email that's supposed to, but doesn't go to everybody. So I can do that tomorrow morning.
If you guys all make your, do for board, do we need the board dot chair?
Uh, maybe it's not the kind of Tim. I mean, I guess unless like the some. Yeah, okay. As long as you run it by, I don't know, as long as I saw a legal event there.
Yeah.
There's gonna be third recommendation that OSBA has. Not that I have researched. I'm happy to look it up for you guys.
Yeah, we might wanna just double check that there's not some reason in terms of transparency and or legality to. Use, I mean, even if I create it, it's still technically a personal email if I'm the only person that has it to it.
Yeah, I'll get that and I'll let you guys know. And then as long as we're good, we'll just send me your preferred board email. I've got a few of you already, uh, and then we can delete the old one. Get messaging out that this is the new procedure and just cleans things up.
Yeah, I mean, the most important thing is that when people send an email and go somewhere, but I still think we need to sort of agree that. I mean, we still encounter the thing where it's like, okay, if I get an email, I don't know if everybody else got it. So we need to make sure that. We're communicating with each other that, hey, I got this email, this person's sent about this. And just sort of, and then the Tim's really the one who's supposed to be responding directly to such things as chair.
So did you guys receive the emails that I forwarded you, burn that board? Okay, because he didn't respond, so I did.
So did you guys receive the emails that I forwarded you, burn that board? Okay, because he didn't respond, so I didn't know if you actually got them.
I have responded to the one right before, like the.
Okay, then they did wanna make sure that you guys had seen up to that point, hadn't got forwarded.
I have, I have been getting, and maybe it's because I've been in the system longer.
I've not been getting the floor months.
If the technology is gonna fail, we're look up and I'm just.
Individual email that work. Alright, um, moving on to the next one, this is a proposal that I'm bringing to the board for um. Public, I started in a new business, uh, public participation in board meetings. Uh, and that I was sitting in the crowd and like, oh, now I know more information if we've actually discussed the motion before. I gave or after I gave public input. So what I'd like to see, uh, this would be a motion to vote on um. A motion for board practice for public input, so what I'd like to do is when we receive public input at the beginning of the. Meeting is we receive non-agendized public input at the beginning of the meeting. Then opening the floor for public input on each action item after board discussion. Uh, so if we, that way we will follow the agenda and then like, ooh, I got. I got a question about that, so in. Uh, public input we had tonight, if we had it on the agenda, preschool promise. Then they know I can hang out until that preschool promise discussion and insert that. That discussion item there instead of waiting the whole meeting to kinda uh, wait and see if they. Have any idea what what I want during the agenda, I've seen others uh, school districts do this. And then allowing individual board representatives uh, to make a statement after the non-agendized public input segment, so. Um, Vince did say, hey, you can, you can do that if there's a public comment. You can represent yourself as an individual representative to say, thank you for your comment, hey. We can chat about that, however you, however you want to address that as an individual. Um, and since some of the goals are morale, public morale with teachers. I'm thinking the teachers be like, oh, there's an agenda item I can speak directly to during that time, so. I'm seeking the board's approval uh, or improving stakeholder input, and I'll facilitate efficient interaction with people and building community. Good, and well.
I'm sorry, I just need some clarification, so. Are you, so. Let's say we have us, community members just come to the meeting to watch the meeting and then didn't sign up for public comment. You're saying throughout the meeting, every time there's a vote, they would have an opportunity to give public comment?
Correct. And we'd be probably a little more strict on time, or I would be a little more strict on time. And we can make it one minute, we can make it two minutes, um, but it allows. The public to interact specifically with an agenda item. In real time, instead of going at the beginning. And did they hear me, I guess, I don't, maybe I need more information, or they get information after the public comment. And I don't anticipate the crowd that we have. To go, hey, I'm, give me, give me my seven minutes, I'm, so we can keep it, um, so, yeah, it won't be seven minutes, but. If they do it at the front end or they do it during the agenda item. It's still the essentially the same amount of time.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that if it's something they were planning to give public comment on, I guess what's confusing me is. Some of this sounds sort of just sounds like a public comment free for all, in the sense of like, and you're, you know, you talk about it not, and like. I understand what you're saying, like, it is, it is frustrating to give public comments, cause you don't necessarily get to hear about the thing that you're talking about, but they have to know the agenda. I mean, obviously that's publicized and everything, so you you're you're saying this would apply to things that were already on the agenda. The person was planning to come in and give public comments, so their public comment is delegated to when that's actually occurring?
Correct.
Or are you saying they give public comment at the beginning, they watch us talk about it, they get public comment, yeah?
No.
Okay.
Non-agendized items, so we didn't have anything on the agenda, so Riley's um, her. Goes in non-agenda, so do you have an agenda, agendized question, or we're gonna have a, have a thing with that later on. So then when we're actually talking about the mode, we can also set it to where it's only during motions, so discussion items would not include. Other comments, and when we're changing policy with a motion, then we can relate it to the motion. Or a public comment about the motion that we're making, because then you have a public comment in real time. With the agenda item there, instead of pot shotting at the beginning, hopefully. They will fuse this somewhere with what our thoughts are. Does that make sense?
Would there be, would they be, I mean, it would, it would change the sign in sheet a little bit. So would they be pre-signing up to make a comment under the. Corresponding agenda item, so that we could kind of look at it and know when to stop and invite them versus knowing. Oh, don't be signed up for them.
Yeah, maybe once discussion is, once discussion is done, open the floor for public time. Cause technically, the only people who are supposed to talk during the meetings are the five board members. During that time, but we, we nonchalantly allow just, like, at least people sitting at the table. To say something, so effectively, we're allowing co- public comment during the board discussion items anyway. So I'm just trying to either, either be, I'm trying to give a, give the opportunity for the public. To be involved in the public comment section on an agenda item in real time. So that way it feels more collaborative with the public. And I see the pitfalls in it.
Yeah.
Get where you're coming from, cause just to sit here quietly and listen to someone make their points and then just say thank you and, you know. I, it, that is really hard.
I'm sure that's changing though.
I just haven't wrapped my head around. Could we roll this around and have a second reading?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess I need some sort of more hypothetical examples, like, like. That are conversations, and that's not necessarily gonna change. With this system, it might feel a little bit more like, well, at least I'm giving my public comment during. During the action, like, there's not that separation of time between, if if it happened to be giving public comment on something that's already on the agenda, I mean, when you're giving some public. Public comment like today that something wasn't on the agenda, it's definitely super satisfying, because we might not discuss it again for a month, or we may not discuss it again in front of everybody. I guess, yeah, what I don't love the idea of, it's just sort of. Sort of this like popcorn of like, oh, I wanna give a comment now, oh, I wanna give a comment, you know, then just sort of the.
Yeah.
That might bog down in the meeting, that's not super productive.
I would really like to see the video.
Yeah, I'll shoot you a video, yeah, out first. It it does, it does put a little bit more time on. The meeting, but it also is a lot of goodwill for, so I'll, I'll, I'll write it out again. I'll, I'll see a motion tonight, I'll write that again, send you guys some information and then.
Well, if you have an example, and even just like a recording from, said that there are groups that do it. Like, like, send it's a little sympathy, but this is what it looks like, because I think that would help a lot.
Yeah. Okay. And you. Next, uh, agenda island is Division twenty two standards reporting from Kristen.
Okay. This is gonna be another present solution. Alright, so Oregon law requires all school districts to annually review Division twenty two standards and report compliance to their local school board. And to O B E and to the community. Do for school is in compliance with the majority of twenty twenty Division twenty two standards, and let me clarify, our report is always for the previous school year. So I'm reporting on the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. Um, however, there are several areas that do require corrective action going into this year, so um. Just wanted to give an overview of the compliance process, key findings, and then our plan to address the areas that were in non-compliance. Division twenty two standards are codified in Oregon Administrative Rules, Chapter five eighty one. And they outline that so students at all of our public schools in Oregon. Um, are receiving adequate education on the equal playing field, so we're all striving to meet these standards in all one hundred and ninety seven districts. That we as a district need to review all of our standards, standards annually, report our findings to the local board by November first. Post a community report on the district website and then submit an insurance form to O B E no later than November fifteenth. So this is quite a big review, so I've utilized data coming from my cabinets. Our school administrators, program directors, I've had to cross check a lot of policies and practices and documentation against all of these requirements. Um, I also gathered some input from Columbia Gorge E S D collaboration, um, and again, board policy reviews. So I'm gonna go through my community report for you, except at the top. When you get rid of this window for myself, though.
Is this what you wanna measure?
Well, I like to share it myself, cause then I can read it, so I have to turn around. Um, so again, chapter five eighty one, Division twenty two, these are our standards of compliance. Went over collaboration. Myself and Miss Wells participate in monthly meetings with Columbia Gorge E S D partners. And we do receive a lot of guidance on O A Rs and policies associated with these state initiatives. And take a look at our checkpoints, um, myself, as the director of special education, Charlie Hunt. Have weekly meetings, um, when possible, and work with our O A Rs as part of our agenda. To make sure we're in spec compliance. And then as a school board, your contribution in Division twenty two is that you are the ones conducting policy reviews and making updates to our policies. Okay, so we do this every year, and what I've compiled is a chart. They have rule summaries for the Division twenty two. They're um, high level, they don't outline every single requirement, that's where. Myself and the administrative team have to cross-reference all of our information. Um, so the link to the rules in the first column is gonna provide details and specifics. There are highlighted areas, so changes in waivers for last school year, four twenty five, those are in yellow. And then changes to look out for, for next year's report, which will report on this full year, twenty twenty five, twenty six are in blue. And those are gonna be implemented, implemented this year and assessed for compliance when I do this report for you guys next year. Okay, so if we're in compliance, you'll see that in the far right hand column, it'll say yes, if we are not in compliance, it will say. No. Please feel free to stop me, this is, this is the most comprehensive report I've done in my three months on the job and. I learned a lot too. So we start with high quality learning experiences for all students looking at um, things like high school diploma requirements, so. We have, we are meeting requirements for a standard diploma, a modified diploma, and an extended diploma. We are meeting requirements for the new sort of certificate of attendance that came into effect last school year. We have a K twelve comprehensive sexual education program that's talking about healthy relationships, child abuse prevention. Healthy sexuality in our health programs. We have a K twelve career education plan. Last year, we were not meeting time requirements for pay through A P instruction, so we are no on that standard. Um, we had some grades in K five that were not meeting the minutes. We were meeting all of the minutes with our middle school P E, which is a hundred and fifty minutes per week. Averaged out throughout the year. We have a K twelve media, also known as a library program. We did not adopt any um, new instructional materials for the twenty four, twenty five. But we have policies in place that lay out our adoption process. We were out of compliance for following the adoption cycle, specifically in math and science, and that is due to. Yes, there's a cycle for when we're supposed to adopt, but there sure isn't a heck of a lot of funding coming from the state level for these curriculums. Um, you remember off the top of your head, our most recent adoption was K two E L A.
K two E L A has like thirty two thousand dollars.
So we were not in compliance and the state recognizes that there's a huge issue in funding. Um, so they have a postponement of instructional, instructional materials adoption that you can do. But we did not do that for math and science, so we're, we're out of compliance. We have one staff member, um, our title one director who has taken the. Dys- dyslexia training from O B E's accrupalist. We have um, a tag program and a tab handbook. We have policies and procedures relative to alternative education programs. We have elective credits that can be earned based on mastery of recognized standards, competencies and skills. And district curriculum, there are, there were new requirements last year for district. Curriculum, which included a planned K through twelve instructional program for social emotional learning. A planned nine through twelve instructional program, which includes personal finance education and higher education and career path standards. We were not in compliance for a portion of that, and that was our social emotional, because we don't have a document. Although we do have social emotional learning as part of our wellness room and our specials. We don't have that documented anywhere, so I didn't feel comfortable writing that we were in compliance for that. Comprehensive school counseling. We are supposed to have a comprehensive district and school counseling program at each school based on Oregon's framework for comprehensive school counseling programs. Um, that supports academic, career, social, emotional, and community involvement. Um, we do a good job in our small district, um, planning out students' academic pathways. Um, doing career program or career planning with them. Um, we have a social emotional program with our counseling office and we have a community service, but again, none of that is documented in. Any sort of formal comprehensive district and district counseling program, so I don't think that that should be in compliance. Um, definitions, so we're ahead of the game for test administration. We already have our seed service and alpha screening in place, so we are in compliance, ready for next year. Um, exceptions of students with disabilities and state assessments, we do have an extended assessment that some of our. High needs kids qualify for, we are in compliance with that. Assessment of sent essential skill has been waived until at least the twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty. Um, eight school year, so that was an N A for now. Same with the family conversation, um, family informed information gathering process at kindergarten. That is being piloted and won't be a requirement until those pilot schools have concluded the pilot, so N A for now. District improvement plan, um, definitions and guidelines for district C I P must be done once every four years. We don't have that documented on our website, so we're out of compliance for now. Filing state records and reports, student records, student activity funds is yes. O B E annually P E minutes as well as physical capacity, we were out of compliance for P E minutes, so whatever assurances were sent. O B E were out of compliant. Um, verify outlets, let's see, standardization, the verified compliance with Division twenty two standards. Our community report for last year is currently on webpage, yes. Uh, assurances processes last year were done by November fifteen. Let's see, following all applicable O A Rs for students with disabilities, yes. Um, instructional seat time, yes, tag identification, yes. Class sizes maintained to promote effective practices, yes. Teachers, specialists, and administrators must be licensed, yes. Universally screening for factors of dyslexia in kindergarten, yes. Basic information regarding requirement to offer a veteran's diploma, I could find no such thing on the. School website about what a veteran's diploma is and that we would award it, and that would be, that applies, so I did a lot of research on that. And that would be not applied, so I did a lot of research on that. Uh, that one applies to anyone all the way back to World War Two. All the way to um Operation Iraqi Freedom, if they were enrolled in high school and left to. And were enlisted in the military and served in those wars. So I guess like in the case in more recent years, if someone was eighteen and enlisted at that high school. Then they can come back and earn their high school diploma. So we, that's easy, a lot of these are easy, like they're, they need to be documented for people to access. They're easy fixes, there's just sort of the reporting that needs to be done. Um. Report cards, definition and required components, like the copy available of the report cards available, yes. Student assessments and record keeping, yes. For last year, the committee composed of parents and boys, students and community members, the equity. Last year, um, we didn't have to have it in place because we are less than ten thousand students. Parent write notification of time regarding services and programs offered. Uh, yes, that's in relation to tag students complaint procedures, districts having written complaint policy, yes. Um, substance use prevention and intervention plan, so there were updated requirements for last year. You have to have now have a written comprehensive plan for substance use prevention and intervention and we have no such written plan. So we're not. Uh, policies on reporting on child abuse, yes. Anabolic steroid performance enhancing substances training, yes. Safety of school sports concessions, yes. Health services, the policies and practices that govern district health programs and services. Requires districts to have prevention oriented health service plan for students, yes. Healthy and safe schools plan, yes. Emergency plans and safety programs for fire, earthquake, lockdown, lockout, shelter placement, evacuation, yes. Asbestos management plans, yes. Annual report on this restraint and seclusion, yes. Agreements entered into with voluntary organizations, so po- having a policy. Government participation in a voluntary organization that, for example, one that administers interest holistic activities, yes. Equal education opportunity, yes. Every student belongs policy, yes. Auxiliary services, so making sure we're in compliance with transportation, food, custodial facilities, equipment, yes. Um, compliance with O V R five eight one oh two one oh five one one in regards to fingerprinting, yes. Suicide prevention plan, yes. Menstrual dignity for students, yes. Personnel policies, district must adopt personnel policies that include affirmative action, staff development, equal opportunity. Evaluation procedures, employee communication system, release of information and employee files. If anyone convicted under a crime of O R S two point three four two one four three. We are not in compliance for personnel policies because the district does not have an affirmative action policy. Teacher and administrative evaluation support, yes. Core teaching standards, yes. Educational leadership and use of administrative standards, yes. Um, and that this number ten school improvement is not in, it will be in effect. When um districts have to align their administrator evaluations process. At the beginning of the twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight school year. So we are in compliance for most division twenty two standards, but there is some work to do to bring the district to full compliance on all standards. So we will have to develop a compliance plan with O D E, which is. Do we feel great about being in, out of compliance with ten standards? No, never, but by acknowledging that we are not and being upfront about it. We can engage into continuous improvement, hopefully report compliance in all areas by next fall. So some takeaways for things that need to be addressed are grade level time requirements for P E instruction. So like I said, middle school was not the problem, there were a few grades in kindergarten through fifth who were not. So this year we're auditing compliance and supplementing in class P E for classes who's P E requirements are not being met. By their P E specials alone. Instructional materials adoptions, like I said, we did not adopt math or secondary science on schedule due to funding barriers. So we just need to work with O D E on that extension process and make sure that we're filling out those reports. So that we have a tracking system and so that we can get assistance from O D E. There's a lot of non competitive grants around curriculum adoption that I've learned about that. If we're not reporting, we're out of compliance, we're not alerting anyone who can help to help us with funding. Um, postponement, so that leads into postponement of purchase for stated adopted instruction materials, there's a whole process for that, we just follow it. District curriculum, there's new requirements, there were new requirements last year, which included a planned K through twelve instructional program. For social emotional learning. Our school district does provide social emotional learning mainly through our elementary specials with Miss Tiffany and Miss Pamela. And also through our middle school and high school health classes, um, but that needs to be documented to be in compliance. Same with the comprehensive school counseling. So we have to have a documented counseling program at our school based on, I should have brought it with me, a manual about this, that. Or it's comprehensive counseling programs. Um, so that's social emotional counseling, but also that's academic career prep and community involvement, community service. Development for every student, we have a lot of really great staff who kind of split that role. But we just need to go through that manual and write our own plan. Um, district improvement plan, our district has not had to document a school improvement plan since twenty nineteen. So we'll work to collect and analyze shareholder input um to develop a two year vision statement in the school improvement plan. P E data was reported for twenty twenty four, twenty five. Um, based on what I saw on division twenty two report for last year, it was depicting division twenty twenty. It was depicting division twenty two compliance, which is inaccurate. So we need to submit an accurate reporting for P E minutes and in addition to our physical capacity and facilities. Veterans diploma, we just need to get that information up on the website, substance abuse. Or substance use prevention and intervention plan, there's up, there were updated requirements that. Mandates the plan is written for substance use prevention. Um, no such document was written last year, so we're out of compliance and we'll work to put together and publish our written comprehensive plan. Um, one thing that we did really well at your school is have a good working partnership with our local. Not only our local law enforcement, but also juvenile services. You think, um, there's a lot of community partners that can probably provide us with a lot of guidance and writing this. And then personnel policies, we're missing a policy on affirmative action. The board can reach out to O S B A for sample policy for the board to review. And that is the conclusion of division twenty two community report.
Um, so with the division twenty two uh standards after it's reported. Uh, then we had to open up public comment, so if there's anybody in the room that wants to give a public comment on the division twenty two standards, now's your time. Uh, for silence, okay, so any board members have any questions about division twenty two standards?
Yeah, do we have, like, on the P D side, do we have an idea of where we're at? Which here, as I know in the forum, that was a big topic was brought up, so.
On professional development. Yeah, Tess is doing a great job auditing that. Um, just sorry, in the back of your mind, um, there's. There's licensed P E teachers, but you can also supplement within class instruction.
So all in all, realistically, we've had many kids we have in P E classes we offer, there's not enough space. So we, if we were even to hire, it would be beneficial if we hired a P E teacher, but there would not be space. For all of the classes that we have at Duffer to have a hundred and fifty minutes based on our schedule, because we have tons of this room for cafeteria in mid two gyms. Um, but right now, elementary K one has a hundred. Has a hundred minutes and they're supposed to be at a hundred and fifty on a five day week. Um, the second grade class is a hundred and fifty minutes. The third grade class has a hundred minutes. The fourth grade class has a hundred and fifty minutes and the fifth grade class has um a hundred minutes. So that's K five and the goal is a hundred and fifty. We have a Google tracking sheet that if they take their kids on a walk, that's a structured. P um recess is not, none of our staff has filled it in, but we've seen staff members out walking and taking their kids to do structured activities. Um, they just haven't filled it in, so that's another option. And then our six through twelve need P E requirements every year. So we have, I think there's three classes or four that are not meeting.
So what's the discrepancy from last year to this year, like how did, how did, much did it jump from out of compliance, well? Because you're out of compliance, and we're still out of compliance, like did we increase?
Yeah, I think last year all K five was out of compliance. Um, and so one of the things that we did is we combined it if you were in a double class, the double classes go to P E together. And then um the kindergarten, first grade, their specials are split, so it's a fifty minute prep period. So they have the, they have twenty five minutes in P E and then the twenty five minutes is in their STEM. It's a lot to have those levels in P E for that long and it's hard on the teachers, so that's probably the best fit.
Enough, this is really like twenty five minutes.
Yeah, twenty five minutes, that's enough.
Yeah.
If we were to make it compliant, we, every class would be thirty minutes every day. Um, we don't have a full time P E teacher to do that.
And that goes back to my superintendent's report, like one of the competitive grants I applied for this year was a P K. Um, staffing grant, so grant, grant dollars for two years to pay not the whole salary, not the benefits. But just the salary of a P E teacher, but because of the federal shutdown and Oregon being tied to federals. Federal cuts, like, I don't know when I'll hear back on that grant, unfortunately, that's just paraplegic writing.
Well, and I think part of my reason for asking was is somehow. Well, this kind of goes back to some of my conversation we're having about emails too, I think somehow getting back to. Community and letting the old, you know, hey, we were, we're out of compliance on some of this stuff, we aren't making strides.
So.
Feels a lot better than the yes or no, you know what I'm saying, so I think.
To that, um, so the next piece of this that you guys will get in my report next month is we have to. In every area, we're out of compliance, we have to do a plan of how we're going to achieve a plan. So we'll make sure, I'll make sure to put that in my report, so that's a public document as well. Is there any way, you know, it sounds like there's a couple of classes that are being shorted on P E. Is there like a plan to rotate that, so like one teacher or one group of kids doesn't bear the brunt of having to create those other opportunities? Do you know what I mean, like, will there be a rotation where the classes that are getting more time now might have to swap places? In the spring, for example.
That's definitely something I could look at.
Because it just seems unfair to some of these teachers to kind of put that, like that on them.
I mean, they still get time specials, they're still going somewhere, they're just maybe not having the P E that day, but they still get a breath.
Yeah, I just. I realize that. P E elementary coverage is based off of the teachers. Um. Because we have a split, we have a split situation where our teacher is doing some mid level in some elementary. So that time that the teacher's available is limited to like a specific hour. To schedule.
It's just.
It's a tetris. Yeah. If there's a, you know, like. I don't, yeah.
I just paused there, so division twenty two standards.
Yes, um, one thing I do appreciate, Kristen, is you coming up and letting us know about our deficiencies. Because for me, there's nothing worse than signing off that we are meeting our standards. And having someone in the community come up and question that because they have information that I didn't have. That says, no, you're not in compliance, so I appreciate you being forthcoming and telling us because that was not cool.
You're welcome, yeah. We can't, like, sometimes, especially, like, we wear a lot of, a lot of hats in our small school. So some of these new regulations that came about in twenty twenty four, twenty five. Um, I want, being in my first three months here, I want to know what that messaging looks like from the W E. Like from my own perspective, because I, in my role as principal, I didn't get a lot of that direct communication. So just, I want to know what that looks like, like, hey, this is gonna be division twenty two for next year. And they've done a good job of like highlighting stuff in blue, but if we're not looking at it carefully and if we're not looking at it honestly, then we've got a situation where.
And how do we make decisions on what we're doing moving forward when it's budgeting or anything else? If we don't know what we truly stand, yeah, so that's super important, so I don't.
And then to the superintendent's credit and trying to keep on top of all this. Is O D actually communicative, like, hey, this is coming up, we're giving you, I mean, I'm sure they don't, somebody can be called, but are they communicative? Then T S P C is not, and I dealt with them, they're.
That's the word, that's a horrible standard to compare them to. Um, yeah, I think they, if, if you, if you're subscribing to the correct things from O D E, it's good. There, I like their slides rather than their Friday emails, that's what I'll say. But they did provide, like, they did provide a whole page with division twenty two, um. With like exemplar presentation, so I tried to model this after the exemplars, just so it's clear and. Hopefully the language is easy to follow, but feedback is always appreciated.
And I would encourage the board, you can go to O D E's website and sign up for all the newsletters. And you'll get that's your email, what's going on. Um, so thanks for division twenty two, the O S B A policy update versus reading. Is that for E B A D or is that?
This is for a bundle of them, so this was O S B A's August twenty twenty five policy update, just based on. Um, new legislation updates, so I have prepared an attached policy update packet. That I just pulled the highly recommended and the required policy out of adoptions, deletions and revisions. So just a little bit of background information for anybody listening. Um, O S B A publishes regular policy updates and revisions and suggestions throughout the year. And then there's, there are times when current laws and statutes or rules require how, where, when and by whom to be in policy, to be in. To be in policy or to be revised and updated. There might be other times when new policies are required to be adopted if there's new legislation. So what I have for you, just in a nutshell, um, is policy B H D. Um, just to converse, converse, we already have policy B H D, but I did want a conversation around board compensation. And this, our district's current practice of having dinner at regular board meetings. Or which there's been a lot of kind of hot talk about that being considered like a segment. So what you guys want to do with that, um, policy I G B A B slash J O dash A R. That one's education records, records of students with disabilities management, there's just some updates in that one that are, uh. The, the ones in red are required for as far as um information about. It takes off like having to include social security member, or numbers on a permanent record. Um, that was a long one, and we already have this one, so you're just looking for, when I sent this, you were looking for those two, which is.
And those are just O S B A representatives.
Those are just O S B A, yeah, I didn't subdue any of the.
Because you guys know something about like, yeah, being adopted.
Cause you guys know something about like, yeah, being adopted revives and their current formats choices was made.
Um, let's see. Then there is policy I I A, has highly recommended updates in red. Policy I K F. Is graduation requirements. Those. I K F has. I K F has required updates in red, that's from House Bill forty one thirty seven. And that's just the updates to. Our diplomas. Um, J, the, the old J S C E V, with the old personal electronic devices and social media, um. I've just included this in there, so you guys know we go through this and replaced it with our current J F C E V. Um, J H B A, all we're doing, all O S B A suggests we do is remove the double coding. J O I G B A B A R, education records for students with disabilities management, um. That one. Uh, there's required updates in red from O A R five eight one oh nine two one oh nine two two nine. Um, and then J O A directory information, there are required updates in red from O A R five eight. One oh two oh nine two two nine again, so lots of that for record information. Changing for that, that is just, yeah, state O A R update.
Yeah, that's part of the.
So no motion here, it's just a first reading. Um, if you're comfortable with the second reading in November, those changes to the, to our existing policies. Can be adopted in November. There were no new required policies in this, in the August policy review. Um, and then just to note, like, policies can't be adopted or revised in current formats. Like, if there's anything in brackets, I'll take a closer look at that for what we do. I don't think there was, but when we do our second reading in November, if there's anything in brackets, this will have to specify what we want the wording. And usually it's a choice, so.
Do you want to talk about any of those problems? Well, a second reading, so, okay. So moving on to.
Oh, I did, does anybody want to talk about the compensation? Other services and the food?
Well, I, I mean, really want to. College is basically the template state that we can't pay for food at meetings. Yeah, I thought, I mean, this is a separate policy, but it seems a similar thing. As, we know that our board meetings are. But that's fine, I have a meeting before, I didn't want to.
Do you know, do you know if that's related to where boards have now decided to give themselves. So we'd have to, we would have to put it in somewhere that we're tightening ourselves.
Yeah, and claim it as a term.
Yeah, and also like, yeah, I'm fine with that.
I can sell if we, when we do, if we do July training.
This is a hundred percent serious, throw me twenty dollars and I'll buy a brisket and bring it out.
If it's free of charge.
Yeah, meal tree. Yeah, so like at the college, we have the cost of meditation.
Alright, next agenda item, uh, indoor air quality.
So this is part of our indoor air quality grant that we received last summer. We are required to adopt a formal indoor air quality policy, so really we're thinking about protect, protecting our students' health. With our indoor air, especially our more, um, vulnerable students who have allergies and things like that. So O S B A has developed a model policy E B A D that does meet the requirements of the grant. In lines with best practices, and it just. The policy is pretty short and sweet, so it establishes district commitments and maintaining high I A Q standards. Which is already a practice we're doing for grant management. It outlines procedures for monitoring and responding air quality to concerns, which. All of these things align to what we're doing for grant management. Insurance compliance with state requirements tied to our grant funding, and then just promotes transparent communication with staff. Students, families regarding I A Q practices, which I could, I think would come in handy in a situation, in a wildfire situation that we might experience in September. And just lays out those faults, because the fault of our air quality is not the greatest.
Is there like a particular like air quality? Where we that we're like, oh, do you have so many years, it's happened before that we've had a cancer school before.
Yeah, twenty twenty was probably, I think, the last time when we had all of those, um, fires. In the, um, the mountain range, which we, even though we were. So we were online, cause it was September twenty twenty, and so it's cool, cause our internet was out because of, anyway. But what this grant is going to provide us with are indoor air quality monitors. So that we just put our eyes on that air quality inside, cause a lot of the times, like. It's fine during wildfire or whatever. Coaches have loose practice inside, but what about the times where it's so bad that. That inside is even questionable, like I remember when I was coaching high school volleyball here. In the fall of twenty eighteen, when the Eagle Creek Fire was happening, like. The football boys were up in the upper gym. My girls were in the lower gym, it was pre H vac update, and I was looking up and like I could see smoke filtering through the building. And we're almost going to talk, so that. Just provides a little more eyes on them. So what I've attached for you. I, I should also provide you with the information that the grant had us create an indoor air quality management team. So I have our indoor air quality coordinator, and then also on the team is Josie Tess, Dawn Peterson. Excuse me, and Campbell Malcolm. So we've been working to do all of the trainings required of us from the grid. And we also developed our mission statement that I just wanted to share with you. We tried to model it after the wording in our school mission statement, so we, together with our students, staff and families, due for school district prioritizes clean, healthy indoor air. To promote wellness, learning and lifelong success. And then in front of you for a first reading is indoor air quality or I A Q policy E B A D. And again, um, there's some bracketed stuff in there that the board would need to make a final decision on.
Uh, first question would be, do you have to have this policy in place? Soon to take care of, like, does that have to be?
The first one is December thirty first, so I, if we do a first reading now, we're on schedule to adopt.
To clarify, is this policy as a whole, or is this like, we either pick this first section or the second section? First.
Or second, it's super short.
So either one of these would be the whole policy.
Yeah.
And so we're choosing between the two of these.
Yeah, and then making a couple decisions on wording. So like, for example, if you were going to go with a top stanza, the second paragraph, we staff will make efforts to maintain good. And quality of district buildings, um, the superintendent, you could change it to I A Q coordinator. Rather than superintendent, um, you'll monitor district buildings for indoor air quality problems. Which are, which include such and such.
Any questions about this policy as related to the grant that we get? I do have one, is seeing the encumbrances of what the grant gets us into. What's the process when we get it? Is it fifty thousand dollars? Or, I'm not sure what.
It's actually, it's fifty thousand dollars in total, and we get it in chunks, so. We're going to get, once we get this policy adopted, we'll get, um, a chunk of money that will go towards. The purchase of the indoor air quality monitors.
Installation is also.
No, and then you have to do a district needs assessment, like, you're just completing. To move towards the steps of installing your indoor air quality. Yeah.
The biggest question is. Are we going to incur expenses? By going through the process where it says, now you're, thanks for, here's, here's a thousand dollars, but here's the assessment, it's a hundred and twenty.
No.
Okay. And so we'll visit this policy next month. Again. And now we are at. Yeah, technology surplus.
Right, so our district received a different fifty thousand dollar grant this summer to replace all of our staff computers. So now what we have is this technology surplus, which includes forty nine PCs, thirty one monitors and. Um, ten laptops, all of this equipment is in between ten and fourteen years old. Um, so in accordance with District Policy D N, disposal of district property, the board is asked to authorize the disposal of this equipment. Through a certified recycling services, um, I did attach that policy, so, um. If the. If disposing the property that's no longer usable, needed or material value. There's the declaration of the property as surplus, you could consider reuse or resale options. Um, ensure proper data, proper data security before disposal and authorize final removal for district inventory. So considering equipment that's between ten and fourteen years old, like market resale for devices at this age is pretty negligible. Um, making recycling the most efficient option, um, proper disposal through an actual recycling company. That takes care of district property such as this would require data wiping to make sure we're detecting. And getting rid of sensitive information, um. So my recommendation, just based on the age of the equipment, would be that the board authorize the district's director of technology. To contract with a certified recycling services, which would wipe all devices of sensitive data. Property, properly recycle or dispose the outdated equipment and then remove that surplus item from our property inventory.
So we don't have a cost. The, the.
No. We've done this as well. Does he have a cost estimate for recycling? I think we know that too, I don't have that in front of me.
But also assume that we. That declared district property, we would need to have a list before us to. Ask during a meeting to say this is the property that we are asking to be disposed of.
So forty nine PCs, thirty one monitors, ten laptops. Would you be more in line?
I don't know, I, I'm just wondering if there's this, if there's a law that says you're getting rid of this particular, but I don't know, in my in, insurance. Or, um, where I work is if we have property, it's all documented, like this is the property we are. Dissolved, so that's, I don't know, just checking to see if there's a state law where.
We have to list the numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, what you, you need to do is, is I can see the idea, they threw out. Whatever it may be, I don't know if there's a law that have, or you have to declare this model, this thing can be disposed from the government.
Okay, I will look into that.
It just makes, I would think there would be taxpayer funded property to dispose of beyond scope. Get rid of, get rid of the viewers in there, like, so.
Yeah, we'd like to know a cost associated with that, to make sure that. Was there any? Money in the grant? That was to go towards disposal of old property, or was it all only for new property and we have, and we're paying to get rid of it?
Was it broken down that way at all? We made a request that was almost twice that much, and they said. It was fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, do it at one, to give you this, there's two numbers. The numbers are on this list.
For the.
Spot that we're filling.
Yes, we, we already passed.
Oh, okay. We're not doing the whole list, we're just doing, okay, thank you.
Okay, extra duty contracts for robotics.
Robotics, fall after school program, um. So. We have an update to our extra duty positions. That you guys originally approved, I think, in July. So what we have filled is, S wealth has taken over as yearbook advisor for the year. Jody Weaver is continuing, um, this year as the robotics advisor and coach, and then. For the fall, our after school program due for campus leaders are Nicole Powell, Alan Springfield. And Debbie Lebra, in our survival campus after school program teacher is Justine Bagay. So we're looking for a motion to hire the twenty five, twenty six extra duty updated positions as attached.
I'll make the motion to hire the extra duty position as attached.
Yeah, second, same, and Dave, uh, and motions, Dave seconds the hire the extra duties contracts. As presented in the packet, all those favors, say, I, I, any votes? Alright, motion passes unanimously. So with that. Extra duties, um, we are going to go into executive session with O R S one nine two six six zero two B labor negotiations. One nine two six six two F exempt records and one nine two point six six two I job of permanence. And then, um, so recessing this, we're going to go into executive session. When we come back out of executive session, the only thing that's going to happen is we're out of executive session, and then you're in the regular. Thanks for coming out.
Uh, what about Ty's application, or was that just for us?
Oh, that's just, yeah, we have an application for student, um, representative to the board, so I'll just email you guys, just follow up for that.
Okay. That I need to.
Yes, please. She told me.
Are the recording?
Yes, volume is back on.
We're back online. We're out of executive session. I'm calling to adjourn in the regular board meeting for October 7. We have adjourned.
Thank you.